There because you're refusing to leave or you don't need to to do anything with that house. It's not in the way of the project.
Um, that I believe that owner wasn't interested in selling their property. They're staying voluntarily.
Okay.
It's not it's not part of the zone change. It's not within the zone change. It's just the the property next door to the zone change area.
Okay, okay.
I just was pointing out that they're staying so that we get an idea. There's a house on the corner of White's and Bridgetown that wouldn't be removed.
Mm hmm. I I understand that. I was just wondering why they were staying. Did they refuse? Or they're not necessary for the project? That's why I was asking.
Got it. Um, I I the applicant can explain that for sure. Um, I believe that they they weren't necessary for the project for sure. And I believe that they were contacted and weren't interested in selling, but.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much for that explanation. Um, also, so we had a lot of concern about stormwater. So we've just heard about how that will be remedied. There was also a concern. I I don't know if you all saw a communication related to traffic um and increased traffic flow. And so I did reach out to the engineer's office who indicated that without a known development, it's difficult to get an understanding of what increase there there would be related to traffic. And so and because the road, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, is an uh ODOT maintained road, that ODOT would be the agency to conduct that traffic study, not the county. And so that was conveyed to the person that that brought it to our attention. It was a one of the residents down on that street, and she seemed to be okay with that and understand that it it's it's premature to do the traffic study, not knowing what the development is going to be. So I hope I summarize that correctly. Um, so Bridget, could you tell us if there are people that would like to speak during this public hearing?
Uh, so far, we do have uh some attendees here. And if they would raise their hand, I know Tom Burton, you had your hand raised. Uh, but if you raise your hand, I'll allow you to speak. And Holly Riley would like to address the commission.
Thank you. And as a reminder, you have the pleasure of the floor for two minutes. Uh, and we will call on you as you raise your hand.
So Holly Riley, she just unmuted. There you go.
Thank you. Um, so as the um HOA president for White's Estates, if there's any documentation that comes along with with which um Mohammed had referred to as like a a volume certificate or something like that, whatever's officially done at some point, if that could be sent to us at my address as the HOA president, just so we have some documentation that clearly um just the paperwork that we've had concerns. Um, like I said, I have the retention concern, but I also know that the Taylor Road reconstruction with the current large volume of dirt that is placed there is causing erosion of that hill with that you saw with the trees. So those are, you know, I want I I know I've addressed that concern um because we do have to do some repairs to the lower green space because of the erosion. And that started when the dirt was relocated to that site, which I'm assuming they're going to move around for this um redevelopment. And I'm hoping that that erosion will stop once that the development occurs. So I just want, you know, anything official, like a copy to have on file for our residents.
Thank you. I'm gonna let Mohammed respond to that.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything we received like volume certification and as build, then we can provide those information to the H O A.
That would be great. So just to make it clear, my address is at the end of the cul-de-sac in thirty six forty nine White Estates. That is the address that I'd like it mailed to if it is possible.
Did you get that, Mohammed?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you. I appreciate your time and thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for participating.
Scott Huber, Commissioner, would like to address uh the board.
Okay, welcome.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, I'm Scott Huber. I'm the site civil engineer with Abercrombie and Associates. I talked to you last week about the project. Uh, I just want to elaborate just a little bit more on the stormwater issues since that seemed to be important. Um, after last week's meeting at the request of the township, uh, I looked at the option of taking the stormwater to Taylor Road. Uh, and I consulted with Todd Long, who works with the county engineer's office. I'm not sure if he's available here on the meeting today or not. But um, we had a discussion about that. And uh, basically, he said that it most likely isn't feasible because of the storm system that they designed in Taylor Road really wasn't designed to take this water, uh, because it's it goes into a different kind of a different drainage area. So he he kind of wasn't enthusiastic to say, yeah, go ahead and put this water in the Taylor Road um system. So I mean, I think I've, you know, exhausted all the options uh for where the stormwater should go. And um, I I think I think it needs to go to the White's Estates um drainage system was designed in two thousand and one. And Taylor Road basically is not going to be an option. So I just like to make those statements.
Thank you. Todd Long is on the call. Todd, do you want to weigh in?
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I I do concur that um I did talk to Scott Huber about the project. I reviewed the drawings that were submitted. I also recalled um the information that we've had on file for the Taylor Road relocation project. Um, that project did include um some drainage improvements that were made for some issues that were occurring on a different portion on the existing portion of Taylor Road and another street called Mac, which is just to the north of the project area. And we did put in detention in that situation to improve the situations. However, the drainage patterns in 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 this project had always had the water driving toward White's Estates from up on top of Bridgetown, and it did not drain into Taylor. So to in order to move that water over to um Taylor Road, be something that we would not be in favor of, and we're not going to recommend from the engineer's office perspective, because the systems that we have in place uh would not be able to easily handle that um that additional water. So it's it's our recommendation that the water continues to flow into the systems as it was designed in two thousand and one, which is consistent with uh with good civil engineering practice and design to keep water in the watershed that it's that it's coming from.
Thank you. Bridget, are there others? We do have Alan Hillsinger on if he'd like to talk. Um, but I do not see any other hands raised. Give it a second, see if anybody else would like to talk.
Are you able to hear me?
Yep, Alan, thank you.
Hi, thank you. I'm Alan Hillsinger, Commissioners. Thank you for your time today. Uh, experts, thank you for your time today. And I really don't have anything further to add. Uh, hoping we get a favorable outcome here and and on to bigger and better things. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I I know that you didn't mean that we weren't experts, by the way.
Of course you are.
Just kidding, Alan. Okay, so that uh, thank you all for for being out. It's very helpful. Uh, we do want to make sure that we're responding to what we're hearing from the residents out in this area. Um, so with that, um, if Commissioners, do you have any comments before we close the hearing?
I have none. Thank you.
No comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So then, in that case, I'm gonna move that we close the hearing. Let's do that first.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, and if we are in agreement, I would like to have staff bring a resolution to us next Thursday for our meeting in favor of the project and make sure that the residents um get the documentation that they need in response to the stormwater issues that they were concerned about.
Hey, um, I will prepare the resolution, Madam Chairman. And um, I just want to clarify, do you want it for next week as a by leave? Or do you want it on your regular consent agenda in two weeks?
I I leave it to you, Brian.
We've been putting it on the regular agenda.
That that is fine and dandy.
Okay.
Yep. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, so that concludes the public hearing. Let's move back up to comments of Commissioners. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no additional comments today.
Okay, Commissioner Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so I was speaking to a friend of mine, and uh, it's it's Barbara Graves, who happens to sit on our T L R C Commission. Um, and she told me that North College Hill Trojan Market Pantry will have a food giveaway. Um, starting, it will be on October sixth, which is next Tuesday, at three o'clock until the food is gone. They say, join us starting at three and pick up a free box of food. It will be in the stadium lot of North College Hill High School, which has which is at sixteen twenty West Galbraith Road. Again, the address is sixteen twenty West Galbraith Road. Ta da.
Thank you. Okay, um, I have a couple things. Bridget, I don't know if you've got the graphic. I I wanted to make sure that people are aware of the testing sites in Hamilton County. These are the testing sites that are available because of our um collaboration with the Health Lab and the money from the CARES Act. So, boy, I can't hold on. Yeah, so we've got some sites that are, you can see it, say, St. Ignatius, for instance, every Sunday from three to seven is a testing site. Every Sunday at, oh, the Justice Center Plaza, every Tuesday at the Inspirational Baptist or Bible Church. So you can see that we've got periodic testing going here to make it easier for people to um access that testing and know where it is. Uh, and then, so I I just wanted to make sure that people knew that this was available. So the testing that's going on right now is congregate, but it's also these pop ups. And so again, just want to raise awareness about the Test and Protect Program uh that's being run through the Health Collaborative and in partnership with all the hospitals in the county to make sure that people know that uh there's easy access. It's free. Uh, you don't need a doctor's note. You can go get tested and get your results. I think it's within forty eight hours. Um, so anyways, um, there there's the graphic. And Bridget, is this on our website?
It is.
Okay, so people can go to our website also and access this information. Thank you for putting that up there. Um, also, we've been talking a lot about the census and the deadlines. And as you all know, we got an extension for a few days here on the census to October fifth, which is next Monday. So if there are people that did not heed our directive and say and get it done um by the previous deadline, um, mytwentytwencensus.gov, there's still a minute. Um, we're just above our numbers from last time, which is not great, because that's a significant undercount. Uh, and remember, the monies that we get from the federal government are all related to this account. We need to get our fair share through the count. And and not coincidentally, the testing money that we just talked about, that is related to the population of the county, right? All this funding. So uh, we really, really need to get a fair count here. So um, mytwentytwencensus.gov, uh, and that's all I have for today. I I do want to alert the Commissioners that Gray Kesterman will be joining us right around two o'clock, I believe. Um, so uh, I will welcome him when he jumps on. He he um has an announcement to make. All right, so let's, oh, I'm sorry, Jeff. Jeff Aludel.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of uh by leaves for today. First, a quick comment. So as the board is aware, uh, we are now fully into the budget process, um, working with the Budget Office and and developing uh an administrative recommendation for twenty twenty one. Uh, probably look to have that to the board uh in very late October, early November. Um, but along with the the budget process is more than just the general fund, but includes um multiple different funds, including the MSD budget, which obviously is important to the community as it relates to the implementation of capital improvements, the consent decree, uh, as well as um uh additional um uh or issues related to rates and affordability of rates, et cetera. Uh, so MSD has submitted that budget to the county. Um, that budget, uh, both the operating and the capital budget are uh posted online on the county's website. Uh, so people, if they if they're watching this meeting, you can go to the county's website and access that budget. Um, I just wanted to make the public and the board aware of that as we go into uh budget hearings. Uh, we will also schedule separate budget hearings for the MSD budget. Usually those occur in uh very late November sometime, actually, probably more typically uh in early to mid December. So there's plenty of time to to access that information and provide comment um if desired. So on to by leaves. Uh, so we have several by leaves today. By leave item number one is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Amaresco. We discussed this at our Tuesday staff meeting. Uh, it relates to the use of CARES Act funding for the implement or the uh installation of touchless fixtures in the eight hundred Broadway Building, the courthouse, and the administration building. Uh, the contract value is four hundred and seventy four thousand nine hundred and thirty two dollars. Uh, and this relates to the installation of fixtures that, again, are touchless, uh, so are conducive to not spreading uh COVID nineteen and other other diseases. So um, uh, it absolutely relevant to CARES Act spending. Um, we discussed this a bit on Tuesday. Happy to answer any questions, but the administration recommends approval.
Any questions?
I have no questions.
No questions. Thanks.
All right, I'm gonna move that we approve of the resolution number P zero nine two dash two zero, authorizing an agreement between Amaresco Inc. and the Board of County Commissioners on behalf of county facilities for the replacement of manual faucets to touch touchless faucets.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. Hey, Jeff, before you go on, uh, we do have someone with their hand raised. It it's Tom Burton. I'm sorry, Tom, if we neglected to call on you earlier. Um, and my understanding is that he would like to comment.
I I would like to comment. Thank you very much for for the opportunity. I'm the superintendent and proud to say that I am of Princeton City Schools and that my comment is specifically about the the gun range. And uh, I really appreciate so many people for for taking this, um, which shouldn't even be a battle, but taking this on and doing what's right and what's just for the students of our district. Uh, I've had amazing conversations with Reverend Paul Booth, as well as Vice Mayor Smitherman. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here today. So I'm just gonna tell you a quick story. I know I'm gonna talk about this at the public hearing next week. But there's a young man who moved from Youngstown, Ohio for a better way of life. Uh, according to him, he was a fifth grader at Lincoln Heights last year. Amazing young man. When I interviewed him for a video program, uh, to say that I was impressed with who he is, uh, it was an understatement. And the reason why I moved to Lincoln Heights is because that's what he that's what he does, and that's who he who his family is. Um, I'm sorry, I hesitated there. I just didn't want to throw his name out there. Um, but ultimately, uh, he was so impressive, we went back this summer to follow up with video. In the video, he thanked the teachers, he thanked Princeton and how excited he was for this pandemic to end and come back to school full time with his friends and learn as you should. At the very end of the video, you heard multiple gunshots. The look on his face, and as he turned around to kind of look to see what it was, uh, it startled him. And after the interview, he said, yeah, I I heard you were just, you just have to get used to it. And that's something that we shouldn't have our kids get used to, uh, hearing gunfire. And I understand, fully support training. And in fact, I've said this before, that we need more, not less, training. Uh, I am, again, fully supportive of that. Uh, but ultimately, uh, we really need to do something because yet another generation of our kids are hearing the gunfire. And again, whether I don't want to get in any arguments, what came first, or why things are the way that they are, they just need to change because they're negatively impacting our students. And I just wanted to, again, thank everybody for the opportunity to speak today. I've heard wonderful things about each of the Commissioners as I'm talking behind your back, trying to find out who you are. And uh, in fact, some of you, uh, again, I've heard great things. So thank you.
So tha- thank you so much for being on. As you may know, we did pass a resolution, I believe that was last week, uh, in opposition to the gun range being continuing to be used where it is, uh, in support of Woodlawn, Lincoln Heights, and Evendale to move that. And that was sponsored by Commissioner Summer Dumas, uh, and Commissioner Parks and I have both been involved as well. Coincidentally, I went out to the Sheriff's Gun Range this morning. Um, and we'll continue to offer that the county and the city join forces here literally. And um, you know, if we can accommodate a city operation on that footprint and not intrude on anything over there, which is my understanding, it seems to me that it's a an obvious partnership where maybe we can even get some federal dollars to assist assist with a build out uh to accommodate the city, because the federal government has folks on that site using that site as well, as do a lot of the other jurisdictions, right? Because not every jurisdiction obviously has its own gun range. And so I think there is a real win-win here. Uh, but there, as you referenced, there's a meeting next week, I believe. It's Commissioner Summer Dumas, it's at six o'clock on Tuesday night?
Yes.
At City Hall. And I my understanding is that we will all be there um helping to find a solution, uh, because I think you are right, that we no longer should tolerate what we know is a traumatic situation for the kids, particularly in Lincoln Heights.
Well, and again, and again, uh, thank you for sponsoring that. Thank you for passing that. I got text messages shortly after it was passed. And that resolution, I I think speaks volumes. And I've yet to meet one person or talk to one person, regardless of whatever side of the aisle you happen to be on, that would want to have their own children subjected to that type of sound and, you know, each and every day. So uh, thank you to Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner, any comments?
I just wanted to thank uh Mr. Burton for his comments. And I've heard about how strongly uh you feel about that being closed. So thank you again for your support.
Um, Mr. Burton, thank you for coming. I appreciate it. Um, the uh, the dedication and the support that you have of your students to recognize how gunfire would affect them. So I appreciate you showing up today.
Thank you. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you.
All right. Administrator Aludo, we were on by leave number two.
Yeah, by leave number two, Commissioners, thank you, is a resolution. Uh, we discussed this on Tuesday at staff meetings. The resolution approving uh the appropriation of additional funds for MSD's prioritized wastewater collection system improvements. Um, I believe Director Christie is on uh the line as well. Had some conversations with very with each board office um over the past couple of days uh on this item. The administration does recommend approval of the item, but cert but open uh to questions today, either to the administration or MSD as well.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I I want to reframe this one just a little bit. Um, so Diana, Director, you can correct me if I'm wrong. So in when we pass the budget uh for MSD, there is always this allocation. It it reminds me of the SBU program where we put money aside just in case we need it for sewer backups. And in this case, it's for more catastrophic events that are related to landslides or, you know, land caving in or, you know, sewers um cracking or, you know, whatever it is, the pipes cracking. And they are fairly emergent situations that are literally erupt in our county. And so we set aside these dollars uh just in case we need them. And if we don't need them, they roll over to the next year. And in the beginning of the year when we did the budget, there was an allocation for this, but we weren't sure that it was right sized to what we thought might happen. And we said to MSD, look, we've got this allocation, we're committed to the program, uh, and if this isn't enough funding, then we would be willing to um address that and allocate more dollars if the need arises, given, you know, the weather pa- weather patterns, et cetera. And so MSD has come back to us and said, all right, we've run through um most of the funding that was allocated. We've got a small reserve, six hundred thousand, which I know seems like a lot, but in some of these situations, because the projects are so large, it's not that much. And uh, they have been spending more than, on average, a million a month. And so the six hundred thousand does not seem adequate. And so they've come back to us and said, if we were to allocate five million into this fund, uh, then they view that as an adequate amount to get us through the rest of the year before we approve of the budget then for next year, which is up and coming. Um, so that's my understanding of this. And so I'm I'm supportive of this because I don't want to run out of money in a fund that is responsive to some of these catastrophic situations that occur in the county, um, especially given, you know, some of the weather we've been having. So I am happy to support this. Uh, we, as always, will be looking um to uh the director to help provide us with information about where these where the money is going, you know, the projects that are being funded and that kind of thing. Uh, I think that's very helpful for us to understand this ongoing. Um, but that's where I sit. And so I'm happy to have comments and uh questions from the other Commissioners.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I want to thank Diana for the summary that she said um last night or earlier yesterday. Uh, it was very helpful and um it opened my eyes to a a few things. And so I'm also supportive because um there is definitely a need. And so the issue goes beyond uh this need, but looking as a commission, where we want to move forward with uh MSD um as it as it relates to the budget. So right now, I am in supportive of of this also. Thank you.
Um, so last week, I said that I was not. Um, that's because, you know, it it was bothering me. Um, you know, I remember the allocation and that we said that there was going to be money left over. So um, so I have a question. I think I'm I'm kind of concerned that we're using too much of this emergency money for low priority projects. You know, when I when I look at that map and I see the different colors. So I'm hoping that in the next fiscal year that you guys can provide us with updates, you know, as to what you're doing. And, you know, are are the emergencies, are they high or low priorities?
Director, could you comment to that?
Sure. Yes. Um, thank you, Commissioners. Uh, I I will comment to that. Just to clarify, this um this allowance really um does cover multiple types of um work orders that come up in our wastewater collection division. And we, prior to twenty twenty, we had three separate allowances. So we had an emergency sewer allowance, a high risk asset renewal allowance, and a building sewer renewal allowance, um, all for that same division that managed this work using both MSD crews and contractors. Um, and it it really um became difficult from a management standpoint to have them all as three separate funds. But they are different types of work that arise. So I I would not categorize everything that is done under this allowance as an emergency, but they are all um issues that arise, um, you know, either through in a something that uh shows in terms of a cave in or an emergency or some other investigation where we discover um it, you know, a defect or a need to repair a sewer before it becomes an emergency. So I would probably I would categorize it all as high priorities, um, not always at that emergency stage when we discover it. Um, and that's really what we're trying to prevent. So um, I think one of the um, you know, efforts we're we're undertaking this year, and and I think we're in a better position now than we were at the beginning of the year, is to provide that better reporting exactly of, you know, how we're spending the money in these different um areas using this fund. Uh, and and we'd like to, you know, to to give you that routinely so that you can track the spending, um, how we use it throughout the year with our quarterly reports.
That would help me a lot. Um, so, you know, it just kind of bugged me, and I had questions. Um, I I'd hate to see a bus fall through a a hole in the ground or something, so.
That happened a few years ago, so.
Hmm.
Right. So they seem like emergencies to me.
We don't want that to happen.
That's right. So anything to prevent an emergency, to me, it seems like an emergency. So uh.
President, if if I could, so yeah, again, the administration recommends approval. I think we want, as you said, we want to make sure that there's money available uh for the emergent needs as as they come available. I I would echo Commissioner Parks in just saying we'll we'll work with with MSD as we get into the budget processes, as Diana, Director Christie indicated, just to make sure that the the data and and the information is there so that as the board does budget for this uh for twenty twenty one, we've got a good idea of what portion of these dollars are for um or for uh preventive maintenance service requests versus um, you know, the truly emergency type of things. Just again, as Director Christie said, we can we've consolidated uh these allowance categories. And the board should have a good understanding as to, from a a trend perspective, how much we're spent, we continue to spend in each area. Um, but that being said, I think the as as has been indicated, the the dollar value is down to a very low amount, all things considered. And we should have dollars there to make sure that we're able to respond when needed.
Great. Thank you. All right. Um, any other questions before I I have a motion?
I have no questions.
No questions.
All right. In which case, I am going to move that we approve of the prioritized wastewater collection system improvements, resolutions approving and adopting an amended 2020-2024 MSD Capital Improvement Program, and appropriating additional funds, approving the amended detailed plans, specifications, estimates of cost, and/or other relevant documents, amending the resolution declaring the necessity to construct sewers, and determining to proceed with the improvements.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. By Leave Three is also an MSD-related item. This is Resolution 27 from the Budget Office, providing for the authorization and issuance of sewer system refunding revenue bonds, in the amount not to exceed 92.715 million pursuant to the 1985 trust agreement. This is a refunding of sewer system debt that should produce somewhere in the neighborhood of $12 million of net present value savings. Obviously, a good thing to do in terms of helping keep down the total cost of debt service on the capital program, which in turn helps to keep downward pressure on rates. The administration recommends approval.
Any questions, Commissioners?
No questions.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to all of you for saving the taxpayers some money here. So, I will be happy to ask that we adopt the Resolution 27, providing for the authorization, issuance, and sale of sewer system refunding revenue bonds of the County of Hamilton, Ohio, in one or more series, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 92,715,000 pursuant to the trust agreement dated as of October 1, 1985, as amended and supplemented.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I, I'm gonna have you hold for one second, Jeff. I believe Greg Kesterman has joined us. Greg?
Hello, Commissioners.
There he is. Hello, Greg. How are you?
I'm all right.
Good. So, I asked Greg to come on, because we have had a shift in the county related to the Governor's map. And so, Greg, I know the Governor is going on right now, talking about this, but we wanted, I wanted to get your perspective and make sure everybody's up to speed.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. So, shortly ago, we received notice that the county is going to go to Level Three. So, we've been, for the last, I believe, four or five weeks, a Level Two. That shift was a bit of a surprise, because we are looking so well, from my perspective, at least when you look at all of our local data. We're seeing no major increases in hospitalizations or deaths. And, you know, our case numbers have kind of consistently, over the last month, been up and down, but rather steady. We've not seen anything like we saw a couple months back, when things started going out of control, before the mask mandate went in place. When looking very specifically at the Ohio Alert Dashboard, which is what drives this color coding system, there are four flags which have resulted in us going to the red color. The first flag has been throughout the pandemic flagged, and it is new cases per capita. So, today, we are at 90.2 cases per 100,000. To be under 50 would remove this flag from this indicator. So, as I mentioned, this has been this way throughout the pandemic. When we get to 100, it does create a little bit more of an alert within the system. So, that is the first one. The second one is proportion of cases not in a congregate care setting. Essentially, we're seeing the majority of our cases in our community, rather than in these nursing homes and congregate care settings. So, this has been a flag as well. And that has been that way throughout the pandemic as well. The third flag has come and gone throughout the Ohio Alert System. It was flagged about two weeks ago, and has been with us for the last two weeks. And that is a sustained increase in outpatient visits. We saw a jump from September 9th to September 29th. We went from 102 to 192. So, recently, in the last couple of weeks, or in the last week, we're starting to do better. But because of that little jump, it has been flagged. And then, lastly, the final one that caused for a shift on the alert system was the sustained increase in hospital admissions. So, this is a very low number. It went from 1.1 admissions per day to 2.7 admissions per day. But that, that increase over a five-day period from September 21st to September 26th is what flipped the switch. When these data are real data coming from our hospital systems, but they're delayed. And so, this delay, when we looked at the data yesterday, everything looked good, but a few new data points for the last couple of days came in and caused that shift. So, I'll pause there, and happy to entertain any questions about our local data, or dive in deeper if you'd like.
Well, Greg, I just want to thank you for coming on. I think, you know, as you stated at the briefing yesterday, we're actually fairly flat right now on many of these indicators. And so, I think there was some surprise that we would go from orange to red on the Governor's map. And I thought it might be helpful to have some clarification around that. And you've explained it. Let me ask you one thing before I turn it over. Do you expect, then, because these indicators are lagging, and I've seen the graph with the trend here that you talk about, related to hospitalizations, and how that trend has already started to move in the downward direction? So, I don't, I don't know if you can even answer this, but do you expect that we'll stay in the red for very long? I know it's hard to predict, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the key. I really do believe that Hamilton County has been heading in the right, right direction. I've been saying this pretty consistently over the last month. It's very hard to predict what tomorrow or the next week will bring with regards to hospitalizations and new cases. But at this moment, you know, we're still seeing really good mask compliance throughout Hamilton County, and we're seeing just really positive trends in those regards. So, I'm very optimistic. If you look at the data as it's being presented right now, during the Governor's press conference, and you followed those same trends, next week, we'd be in good shape. So, as long as nothing changes, we'll be shifting back to orange.
Okay. And I don't mean to minimize what people need to do, which is wear the mask, stay at a distance from one another, wash your hands, because that is the only way we get out of this and have those downward trends continue. So, with that, I'd like to kick it over to my colleagues for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Madam President. Greg, just one question. Did he implement any sort of restrictions because of our change?
No, there are no new restrictions here locally. The Ohio Alert System does, though, encourage us as citizens to take additional precautions while we're in red. So, it's just, once again, a big, strong reminder to wear those masks, limit some trips that aren't necessary, and use extra vigilance. Commissioner, I do want to say, though, I know some schools here locally have tied their operations, and whether they're in person, or in a hybrid model, to the Ohio Alert System. And I'm not certain if all those schools implement it immediately, or if they allow for a week or two delay. But I'm sure there might be some impact for a couple of our school districts.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you know how many, Greg, by any chance?
I do not have a good count on that at this time. I am working with Chad Hilliker from the Education Service Center to get a better count.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Parks?
I just hope that we hunker down, wear the mask, wash your hands, stay six feet apart. The more we do that, the sooner we will get out of this. Thank you.
Okay. And so, Greg, any advice for those listening as to, given this shift, I know it's the same messaging. Is there anything in addition?
No, I do just continue, wanted to say thank you to the residents of Hamilton County. I really believe, as a whole, we've come together as a community and are strong through COVID-19. And just please keep up the great work, so that we can last through this fall and continue to keep things open and back to normal.
Okay. Thank you. You know, and adds, Commissioners, as we hear shifts and changes related to public health, thank you, Greg, for coming on. Greg's always, you know, willing to come on. I just, it's not always necessary. But thanks for being on today, Greg. And we're going to let you go, so that you can watch the rest of the Governor's press conference.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for being on.
Thank you.
All right, Jeff. I believe we're on by leave number four.
Number four, correct. And actually, Commissioners, by Leave Number Four and Number Five are revised petitions for annexation related to various acreage from Harrison Township to the city of Harrison. These are items to accept for the record. And I believe that the clerk, if she has not already, would refer these to the engineer. So, Jackie, I don't know if these have already been referred in their revised form.
Jeff, these are affidavits of service, and it's just documentation that's required for each annexation. If you remember last week, we got the new petitions that were revised. And these are affidavits that just follow up on how they've advised the area residents and the municipality and township of the revised petitions being filed.
Got it. So, the.
We're just going to receive these for the record.
And the request itself has already been referred, correct?
Yes. It's already with Bob Hyde camp, and he's reviewing the revised petitions.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. So, we will receive Items Four, by Leave Item Four and Five, for the record.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. By Leave Six, so as the Board is probably aware, as a member in the Miami Conservancy District, the county assesses the cost of the benefit of that flood control benefit to the individual units within the Great Miami watershed. It's on an annual basis, we make that, we do the cost of the, to the county of participation in the Conservancy District. And we assess that. It is, this year, I believe, the cost is going up a little bit, I think seven cents or so, to $1.46. That's a per parcel assessment per year. And we need to do this in order to certify this to the tax rolls and get that assessment placed on the tax. So, the administration recommends the Board adoption of the resolution.
Any questions, Commissioners?
No questions.
No questions. Thanks.
Going to move that we approve of the Resolution Number 26, authorizing the county auditor to add an assessment to certain parcels of property for the Miami Conservancy District.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. And finally, by Leave Number Seven was one we also discussed in staff meeting on Tuesday. This is just a resolution approving the amendment of our CARES Act plan to add 3.5 million for, to support a cultural and arts institution support program. We have a draft program put together for that. We will provide the Board with more specifics on the program as we finalize it over the next couple of days, but it should be ready to go fairly quickly. I mentioned on Tuesday that we were looking at an amount between 3 and 4 million at the, I think we just decided to split the difference on that and go with 3.5, and reserve that additional 500,000 for other programs. We'll supplement this program if necessary. But in any event, I think this is something that we feel is very much needed, given the state of these particular cultural and arts institutions in our community. And as such, the administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners?
No questions.
No questions.
Very good. I'm going to move that we approve of the resolution amending the Hamilton County CARES Act plan.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. And there are no further by leaves in this line.
All right. Let's move to our regular agenda. Item Number One deals with SORDA. And this is a resolution that we've actually been working on for a while. And you're, both of your chiefs of staff have been in some meetings over the last couple of months, trying to make sure that we're all up to date and on the same page, related to the reconstruction of the SORDA Board. Just by way of background, as a reminder to those that might be listening and unfamiliar, the SORDA levy passed. And so, the majority, well, all of the funding is now coming through county sales tax, as opposed to the city earnings tax. That has now been eliminated. In fact, the collection of the sales tax started today. So, this is very timely. The revenues won't be realized by SORDA until the beginning of next year, but the collections have just now started. And so, we needed to do a resolution to reconstitute the Board, to reflect the majority of those Board members being county appointees, as opposed to the city, which is the way it has been in the past. And so, we took, I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to members of City Council about this, to interested parties that were involved in the SORDA levy, to bus riders, to organizations that represent bus riders. And so, we have come to an agreement here with this resolution. And just by way of, just a broad framework, there will be 13 voting members. Eight of them will be appointed by the county, five by the city. The city must designate one of their members as someone recommended by the Chamber of Commerce. Of the eight, the county recommends, one of them has to be a person that represents the interest of labor, and the other one has to be a bus rider. My expectation is we'll likely have more than one bus rider as a county appointee anyway, because we already have one. But, in fact, we have two. But regardless, the bus riders will be well represented, I believe, on this Board. And then, the three members that are from the outlying counties, those being Claremont, Butler, and Warren, they have been voting members, but we are moving them to non-voting members. They will still participate, and they will be recommended by the county commissions in all of those counties. They will be non-voting members, though, in recognition that, you know, the constituents of Hamilton County are the ones that are paying for this system. And so, we felt it was necessary to have full representation from the county, from Hamilton County, on this Board. And from my view, that really wasn't happening in the past. And so, that in a nutshell, is what this resolution does. One caveat, we need to get these members on staggered terms. As you know, right now, all the county members roll off and roll on at the same time. And so, there is not a lot of continuity there. And so, we felt it was important to have staggered terms. In order to do that, we have asked for every Board member, whether they're appointed by the city or the county, to resign their position come the end of the year, in an expectation that if the Appointing Authority, that being the city or the county, wants to reappoint them, they will be reappointed come January 1. And so, they have all done that. I've talked to all the Board members of SORDA, whether they're city or county appointees. They've all agreed to do this. We've gotten all the resignations in. And so, they will, their terms will expire at the end of the year. And then, we will have a process in front of us to put people back onto this Board. And to that point, we will have three additional members to be appointed by the county commissioners, assuming that the ones, the folks that are serving right now on our behalf, continue to serve. So, that process, as they always do, will be open to people that live in the county. The application process will be open for 30 days on the county website. So, just go to Boards and Commissions, and you will find SORDA on there. And so, if anyone would like to apply for a position on SORDA, Commissioners, as you know, we will review those and make recommendations after that period closes, that 30-day closes, and then have our appointees ready to go come the January 1 deadline. So, that's, I know that wasn't much of a nutshell, but anyway, that's what this does in Resolution Number One. So, I'm happy to take any questions or comments related to this item.
Madam President, you summarized it well. I have nothing to add.
Thank you.
I have no questions.
Okay, very good. Then I am going to move that we approve of regular agenda item one.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Number two, I see that Todd Long has lit up. This is an engineer's item.
Thank you, Madam President. Item Two involves an award of a contract at lowest and best bidder for a 2020 friction course program. If you're not familiar with a friction course, it's a surface treatment that we use on roadways, primarily in curves and downhill grades that allow us to do a milling, which is going to take a little bit of removal of the pavement, and make that better traction for the motor and public. So, that's what the item presumes. So, if there's questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
All right. I have no questions. Commissioners, any questions?
I have no questions.
No questions. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Todd. I'm going to move that we approve of regular agenda item two.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move to the consent agenda items. We have Items Three through 18. Are there any comments or questions related to these items?
Madam President, I had a few questions for Tim, Tim McCarthy, Director, interim Director, and he answered all of those very quickly and succinctly. So, I have no other questions.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay. I'd also ask I'd also ask for clarity on items 17 and 18 from planning and development. I don't know about you all, but we've had a lot of public hearings lately related to these developments, so I also have had my questions answered. So with no further ado, then, I'm going to move that we approve of consent agenda items three through 18.
Second.
Ms. Erdrea House?
Yes.
Ms. Semardumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We have no executive sessions today. I don't know about you, but.
What's up with that?
Please up my afternoon. So Jeff, do we have anything else that needs to come before the Board?
Nothing further this afternoon, Commissioners.
All right, very good. Well, so, and so we will have our regular meeting Tuesday, and then just a reminder again about the public hearing that will be conducted at council chambers related to the gun rage, 6 o'clock on Tuesday night. So, all right, very good. I will move that we adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Erdrea House?
Yes.
Ms. Semardumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.